We're going to call the North Plains Planning Commission meeting for August the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order at six o'clock. Could you please stand for the following reasons?
I pledge this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Can I please?
Oh. Thank you. Eric King?
Here.
Vice Chair Labonte?
Yeah.
Commissioner How?
Here.
Commissioner Conodell?
Here.
Commissioner Para?
Here.
Commissioner Miller? I haven't heard from him, have you?
I have not heard.
Okay, I'll keep an eye out for him. Commissioner Nenekamp is excused this evening and your ex officio tonight, Councilor Mandy Hagedorn?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Item, we have public comment. We have UGB discussion on agenda as unfinished business, and we will not be taking public comments at that time. So anyone wishing to make comments on the UGB discussion can do the, at this time during public comments. So, anyone?
Okay.
There anyone on the Zoom want to make public comment on anything?
No. I do. This is Ron Bunch.
Ron, go ahead.
Say your name and your physical address.
It's two-two-one-five Southeast Lincoln Street, Portland, Oregon.
Go ahead.
Okay, this evening, we would like to respond to the City Manager's memo seven seventeen twenty-five. It's important to clarify the record here. We've done an in-depth analysis of the memo, and if you wish, we can provide greater evidence of this in writing. So, we don't want the, the following to sound confrontational, but we're in a situation where it's the nature of what's required. We would like to work with the Planning Commission, City Council to come up with a right-sized UGB expansion, and I'm speaking for North Plains Strong Towns Committee and other groups. However, it's important to have a clear understanding of the current situation related to the existing TGM grant and a way forward. We believe the Planning Commission may be doing the hard work of planning for a future UGB using a grant process that may not be credible or applicable. Here are the reasons. The TGM grant was timed, was going to timeout in September of two thousand and twenty-four, is only kept viable by the ex-mayor and lobbyist working with the governor's office to get it extended to June two thousand and twenty-six. These events happened after the May twenty-four voter referendum. The ex-mayor at the time signed an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT and IGA Scope of Work, which specified concept planning within and adopted UGB area of eight hundred and fifty-five acres. The UGB agreement mentioned specifically planning for semiconductor and related land uses. An important point here is that evidence can't be found, cannot be found that the ex-mayor received approval via council resolution. It may be out there, but we can't find it. We went through this process using a public records request of ODOT records. Right after that, the IGA scope of agreement and other agreements were signed between ODOT and three J Consulting. Now, it's important to note that House Bill four thousand and twenty-six passed by the Oregon Legislature would have disallowed voter referendums such as passed by North Plains citizens. The ex-mayor and the city council and lobbyists and allies lobbied hard for this later, this legislation. This was ongoing at the time. It had not been resolved. Later, House Bill four thousand and twenty-six was found unconstitutional, and the city lost its own appeal. Now, we contend the IGA scope of agreement signed by the mayor may be invalid. It may not be possible to use the TGM grant was, that was agreed to by the ex-mayor. The IGA scope between ODOT contracts, between ODOT and the contracts may not be applicable because they are for an adopted UGB. The UGB was rescinded. It does not exist. TGM grant rules are specific that UGB concept plans are to be used only within adopted urban reserves. Now, the TGM grant now will timeout by June six twenty-six. That's barely eleven months away. Furthermore, the applicability of the TGM grant to North Plains current situ- situation is now questionable. So, there are land use and related technical and policy issues that may be addressed, such as housing need, employment projections, transportation, public facility issues. Circumstances have changed, and it will be argued that the city's previous employment and housing projections are now not applicable, since there's no UGB for them to be applied to. Finally, there are important policy considerations. For example, significant issue was the proposal to develop semiconductor-related land uses and provide other development opportunities for supply chain uses such as warehousing. The two hundred and fifty thousand square foot on Grand Union, on AMSO warehouse, excuse me, on West Union Road is an example. There are now also adopted policies in the city comprehensive plan that occurred in November twenty twenty-two that called for development of data centers and more warehouses. This community should be asked if it supports these policies prior to moving forward. Also, there is an out-of-date development code that cannot be relied upon to manage new development. Finally, the legislative process, and I've been through many of these myself, including DLCD review and acknowledgement. Typically, we assign about six months for this to happen. You must have sound findings and meet procedural requirements, which if not done right can meet and lead to difficult appeals. Typically, six months again should be reserved for this process. This leads to concerns that the city does not have adequate time to do this. So, in view of this, the city may wish to take a break from this discredited process, drop the failed UGB proposal. We organize, assess its real needs, engage the community in a structured logical way to write, to arrive at a growth management plan that realistically addresses North Plains' needs. And as I said previously, we would be pleased to engage constructively in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to test, to make public comment?
No hands are raised on Zoom.
Okay. All right. Anyone in the audience? I have Ms. Waldron.
Before I start, I don't know, one of my neighbors couldn't come, but they had printed a letter that they made seven copies of. So I don't know if I can pass that out or floor it through. I'm trying to remember for this meeting, we give our full address, right? Sorry.
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Emily Waldron. I reside at one-four-four Florence Arrow, Northwest Mason Hill Road, North Plains, Oregon, nine-seven-one-three-three.
Thank you.
And I'm here to speak about the UBG new lines that you all are going to be asked to vote on today. I mean, obviously, if I'm speaking and we've heard me speak before, I'm going to be encouraged to vote no or at least to table it for a while. The first thing is concerning the relook committee, which I sat on the relook committee. We never had any formal recommendation at our last meeting when we were presented with different maps. It was given to us as more of like a starting point or a discussion point, not this is a final vote of a map that you are referring to the planning committee to really be using as an urban growth boundary. And I also have a lot of concerns, and it's been voiced by other members of the relook committee to the city council about who the membership was that made up the relook committee. We happen to have a lot of members, including some who are here today, that they and their families stand to make a lot of money if the urban growth boundary is moved around. And I am sure most of us would say that money can color your opinion and your perception and what you're saying and listening to. And we happen to have a lot of people on the relook that skewed towards favorable for growth, favorable for all these things. I think one way that you can see that is that through all of our discussions, we never discuss the common feeling. Everything was always about the different pros if we were adding stuff in, but there was never a day of like a real deep dive into what happens if we don't add in all of this land and we do only the smaller growth or we focus more on land in the city boundaries and nothing about what would be bad to go with that. I also want to bring up with the housing needs analysis, which is part of the reason of why there's a big push for this urban growth boundary. One, the housing needs analysis doesn't need to be done because we're a town under ten thousand people, and we're going to be under ten thousand people for at least the next thirty to forty years. And then the numbers that they have from the housing needs analysis, as well as the economic development plan, took place in a very different economic and political climate than what we currently face. Right now, the largest employer in Washington County, Intel, is laying off thousands of people left and right and are expecting to lay off thousands of more people by the end of the year. Their layoffs are going to lead to other layoffs in our area. Unemployment is currently on the rise. The economic development plan of people moving here for Intel doesn't really make a lot of sense based on the current situation. So, in the county and the, or sorry, not the county, the state themselves and the DLCD in previous meetings have said it makes sense to wait for any sort of housing needs thing. One, because we don't have to do it, and even if we have to do it, so many things are shifting as to what has to go on. Wouldn't it, they were encouraging us to wait until December when the new regulations come out. And also in December, I imagine there will be a better economic forecast picture for our area, hopefully, which will then be able to inform a housing assessment that is rooted in the current situation, not the situation that we were looking at two or three years ago when we had a different type of precedent and we were in a different type of economic forecast. The other concern I have with the urban growth boundary is that up until this point, there's been no public involvement. There's been no town hall meetings that have been like, you know, in the last few months since it was introduced again. There's been no town hall meetings that I know of. We were all busy with the garlic festival with different things going on. There's been no public surveys online. There's been no things going in the mail to get the public's opinion. And I think the last time we had the urban growth boundary forecasted, one of the biggest critiques was that there's no public feeling of involvement. A lot of the community felt like they were blindsided by this large expansion, and they had a lot of concerns about it, and that's what led to the referendum, which cost the city a million dollars by the time we got through everything with attorney fees and the opposition side attorney fees and court cases and all this stuff. So, it would make more sense to involve the public before it gets certified because it's very easy to see that if the public is not involved earlier on and in a more transparent and larger way, you could end up with another referendum situation for another, over another five hundred acres, spending another hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not a million dollars, because we're not learning from what went wrong the last time. So I, like I said, I just encourage you all to table this urban growth boundary discussion until some of these greater issues can be addressed in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who, who is this one? There's no name on it.
Uh, I can write down the, thanks for your public comment, correct?
Yeah.
It was Linda.
Oh, she already sent it. They already have copies of they all.
Just wanted to make sure everyone had a paper copy.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else in the audience? I have Ms. Huth.
Thank you. Chapel in three-two-seven-nine-zero Northwest Eastfold Lane, North Plain, Oregon, nine-seven-one-three-three. And I have three topics. The first is handing out a document from the relook committee. So I was a north representative for the RAP committee. I also did sit on the economic development committee, but there was a separate representative. And I want to commend the city on their approach. There was, it was consultant-led. There was deep community engagement and online survey of multiple work groups. There was several working sessions, and at the last working session, we went around the room and each individual had the opportunity to state their position. They were not asked to vote or make a recommendation. But what we learned is that there was consensus, almost unanimous in the room. And so what I have provided for you is a summary of the statements of the folks involved, along with their preference, where it was stated, because I'm observing a disrespectful revisionist history of that incredible body of work the city invested in. And I'd ask this committee to keep that in mind, and if you have any doubts about what happened, that video is available. The members were asked if there was any additional work or reason to meet, and we felt like we came to a conclusion. Were ready, didn't, didn't need additional work, and as you recall, had that working session with you. So, wanted to put that in front of you. Second, as a representative of the north and as fourth-generation farmers, I also submitted to you a best practice document on agri-hoods. We've been listening deeply to what the community has been saying, what we've heard from surveys and issues. And my niece and nephew are fourth-generation farmers. They went to Farm Bureau and we learned about agri-hoods and were interested in a model that we think might be interesting to the city, where we can actually preserve farmland and do social good in a model that really would serve our community over the next twenty years, which I'll remind you is the planning will go through many presidents in the time that the decision you made plays out in the next twenty years. So I appreciate your work in helping us plan for that future. And the city council has asked for a working session on agri-hoods where we can explore this as an innovative idea that preserves the best of the community, and we're hoping that members of this committee would participate. Lastly, I understand that there's been questions from this committee and in the community about the land reservoir. I think there's some misinformation, so I want to represent a few facts. First of all, is the reservoir safe? I will tell you that it's inspected routinely by a structural engineer and is deemed safe each year in a continuous process. So I would submit that safety is not an issue that this body needs to concern itself with. Second, there are questions about the water rights. Right now, that land lake is zoned for irrigation. I have spent time with the Oregon Water Resources Department that oversees that, and it will require a routine change in the character of use from irrigation to multipurpose. If it were to be built today, they would give it a multipurpose designation, but as you know, it's been in place for several generations. I talked to both the consultants and Joan at the OWRD. Neither saw any issue. It is a matter of making that request and an application fee to make that happen. So it would take some time and effort, but easily feasible. Third, there's been a question about the transfer of rights. And be happy to serve as a resource. I will say in work that our family had done with the city of banks, we entered into a developmental agreement with the city that enabled a very complex and sophisticated transfer of water rights actually to the city. And we think there's no concerns about maintaining the irrigation and the water level, particularly if we think about things like agri-hood where we might continue to use that reservoir for multipurpose. So we think all those things can be worked through in the natural force of planning that this group would, you know, engage in, and we are happy to actually work through those and, and be clear on accurate information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comments? Anyone else online?
None online.
All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. This is for July ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'm going to approve the July ninth regular session minutes as written.
So. Who is that there? So, moved by Commissioner Monti, seconded by Commissioner Para for approval of the July ninth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes as presented, although any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All right. Those opposed, say nay. Right, the, approved as presented. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, the North Plains Flood Plane Overlay District Amendment per FEMA requirements. This is a legislated hearing. We will be making recommendation to city council for approval or denial or to open. So, Laurie, if I could get the process for the public hearing?
Thank you, Eric King. The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a legislative public hearing regarding file TA twenty-five dash zero-zero-one Flood Plane Overlay District Amendment per FEMA requirements. The order of business will be as follows. The commission chair will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The commissioners may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of this item will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed flood plane overlay district amendment. Additional staff comments will then be presented. The commission chair will call for commission comments and discussion. The commission chair will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full correct mailing address or, if preferred, their email address. Preferred parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The city municipal code zoning and development standards specify applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed flood plane overlay district amendment. Failure to raise, raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient details to afford the hearing body and the parties to the hearing, an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals.
Thank you very much. We will open the public hearing at six-twenty-two for file number TA twenty-five dash zero-zero-one North Plains Flood Plane Overlay District Amendment per FEMA requirements. Could I please get the staff report?
Yes, Chair. Good evening, commissioners. This will be a presentation of the proposed text amendment twenty-five dash oh-oh-one concerning our flood plane overlay district. I'm going to start off with a quick note. This may be the third or fourth time some of you are hearing a very similar presentation on the FEMA flood plane changes. We have heard this issue several times. It's been a developing issue. There are some slight changes. So I'm going to ask that you stay fully engaged as we go through this once again. A review of how we got here, starting in two thousand and nine and through two thousand and ten. Portland Audubon opened a suit against FEMA concerning their implementation of the National Flood Insurance Program or the NFIP in Oregon alleging that they were jeopardizing the existence of anadromous endangered species in Oregon, including salmonoids and killer whales. This was settled via an agreement to go through a consultation with the National Marine Fisheries Service. That consultation finished in two thousand and sixteen with the issuance of a biological opinion, finding that FEMA was in fact jeopardizing the existence of endangered species through their implementation of the NFIP in Oregon. The National Marine Fisheries Services issued an RPA, a reasonable and prudent alternative for FEMA to implement in Oregon, and that was the basis for the action we are seeing today. In two thousand and twenty-three, FEMA had not yet implemented that RPA, and further suits were opened. As a result, FEMA has imposed the PICOM, the Pre-Implementation Compliance Measures Program upon all impacted cities in Oregon, and that happened in two thousand and twenty-four. Here in North Plains, we have a reasonable amount of flood plain. Everything you see here depicted in light blue and dark blue and within that red city limits line is our affected properties. It's not an overwhelming amount of the city, but it is a significant portion of the city. Most of those impacted properties are developed residentially. A few remain as public land or water quality facilities, and a smaller portion are commercial or industrial parcels. A little more detail about the pre-implementation, pre-implementation compliance measures. These were interim measures designed to implement no net loss standards between the time of the suits being filed in two thousand and twenty-three and FEMA's implementation of a more formal and permanent compliance. All of the proposed PICOMs required the jurisdictions to implement a text amendment based on Oregon land use law. FEMA did attempt to imply that we could not do a text amendment, and our DLCD shot that option down pretty quickly. So the, the ultimate goal of the PICOMs is to stop degradation of flood plain habitat to protect the functions of flood plain storage, riparian vegetation, and protect structures. And ultimately, as we go into two thousand and twenty-six, track the modifications that are happening to the flood plain. Back in November and December of two thousand and twenty-four, city council was asked to select a PICOM, and they selected the model ordinance option. This would require a text amendment to implement the Oregon Model Flood Plane Code and the FEMA Model, or Model Code concerning the known at loss standards into our current flood plain standards. Now, back about nine or ten, I believe nine years ago, this body and city council did adopt a previous Oregon Model Blood Hazard Management Ordinance. So this is somewhat of a standard practice for North Plains to rely on Oregon's state-level flood plain ordinances. And then the natural consequences of this would be that all flood plain development permits that come to the city for development within the flood plain will be reviewed under these new no net loss standards. So staff went through the process of developing the new flood plain. So staff went through the process of developing the new floodplain ordinance and that is a blend of three important documents. Of course, the Oregon Model Flood Hazard Ordinance, which I've just talked about. The FEMA Model Ordinance, which incorporates the known at loss standards and input from our legal counsel at BEH, their option two. And option two from BEH is a protection for the city from a potential violation of clear and objective review standards for residential development. It was decided in two thousand twenty-three via House Bill two thousand and one that in Oregon, any development, residential development must be reviewed by clear and objective standards only, cannot apply sort of subjective standards to residential development. There was some concern with the model ordinance that FEMA put forward when they were trying to implement these known at loss standards that some of the standards were not objective. There was a lack of clarity there. And so with BH option two, it puts the onus back on the applicant and the developer to provide proof that they are both compliant with all of our clear and objective standards and covered under some other known at loss standard coverage. And so that can be accomplished a couple of ways. The first way is through a habitat assessment. A habitat assessment is actually included in another PICOM option, so we're somewhat double-covered with this code. And a habitat assessment requires them to prove that there's no loss of floodplain functions via an assessment by a habitat specialist. Coverage other under a different federal action. There are a number of federal programs which require you to prove that your development does not endanger any species on the Endangered Species Act. If a development comes in, is already covered under another federal action, that would be honored in our system. If there is an existing habitat assessment, say for a larger development, if a plan, a PUD, a planned unit development came in, or large subdivision, any action within that development would then be covered as well. And then lastly exemption, there's a number of activities which are exempt from known at loss standards such as activities that are solely for the restoration of floodplain habitat. Activities that repair utilities above and below ground and activities that constitute a repair or replacement of existing structures within the floodplain without any change to their footprint. And that's just a few examples. You can find the full list in the proposed code. I am going to leave that there and open the floor for questions at this point.
Do any of the planning commissioners have any questions of the? Do you have anything else?
Nothing from me at the moment.
Okay, anything else from anyone, staff? Nope, thank you. All entertain motion. Remember, this is a recommendation to city council.
I move to recommend adoption to city council for file number TA twenty-five dash zero zero one for floodplain amendment.
Good. Then moved by Commissioner Levante, seconded by Commissioner Howe for recommendation of approval to city council on file number TA twenty-five zero zero one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? unanimous? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. This is the UGB relook advisory committee findings review.
Six thirty-two, we'll close it.
Yeah, sorry, my mistake, six thirty-two. Okay. And procedural, it's all right to, or should I close the public hearing before I ask?
Close the public hearing to move on before we vote. No, there's the record's been closed. It's not, no more testimony here. So you've closed the record, but the hearing's still going until you make a decision. Okay.
All right, then we will move on to unfinished business. As I said, the UGB relook advisory committee findings review and the UGB process and update, staff.
Thank you, Chair King. So this is going to be a review of where we stand with the urban growth boundary expansion process. We're going to begin tonight with a review of the relook project and the findings from that project. I'll then do a short synopsis of where we stand procedurally with the UGB from a land use perspective. And we will do a short review of where the TGM concept planning grant stands with the city at this time. Begin our UGB expansion relook was a guided process of public engagement for the city to consider a alternative approach to the UGB expansion. This was guided by our technical crew with staff and the consultants from Three J. Filtered through robust public engagement process that included three community meetings and four meetings of the relook advisory committee. The relook advisory committee, as you know, was conducted of nineteen, was comprised of nineteen individuals of a variety of backgrounds. Some who were invested in the process from early on, some who were newer to the process. We had residents and non-residents involved in this process. It was a very diverse committee. That committee and the community meetings provided feedback both to our technical crew with staff and consultants as well as direct feedback to the officials at the planning commission and city council. So we had a really strong flow of information between our consultant, our consultants, the public and our official bodies, which we hope will help you to make confident decision as we move forward with this process. So this is a quick summary of the RAC goals as taken from the charter. Just as a reminder of what the RAC really set out to do. This was first and foremost a reexamination of where we started with the September twenty twenty-three UGB amendment recommendation. The process started out with a review of the documents we already had, the housing needs analysis, the economic opportunities and analysis and data that we had already gathered. The RAC had opportunities to share their thoughts on location of residential employment lands, location of parklands. Their concerns with any of the documents and where they would like to have additional information. As we went through the engagement process, the RAC was responsible for reviewing community feedback gathered at the community meetings and providing input to staff and consultants on how they thought that the community engagement process should move forward. The RAC was really essential in shaping how we conducted our public outreach and making sure that we were answering questions that as staff or consultants, maybe we hadn't considered before. And then as the process moved towards the its culmination, the RAC was asked to consider possible expansion alternatives as prepared from previous community input and discuss then the input provided on those alternatives. Ultimately, this culminated in what in the charter was scoped as a UGB recommendation for planning commission and city council. Ultimately was a roundtable discussion wherein each RAC member had the opportunity to identify a UGB alternative and discuss in their own words whether they felt that that alternative was a good option, what they felt its strengths and weaknesses are and what priorities they had in the UGB expansion process moving forward. We got really strong feedback off of that effort. This side is a quick review of how the meetings were sequenced. We started off with a RAC meeting, an introduction to their charter and laying out the scope of work for that body and rolled it into a community meeting in which the community broadly speaking was brought in to receive a sort of crash course in UGB expansion. We went over a lot of topics. We went over our guiding documents. We had a robust public comment section and we took all of that information back to the RAC in their meeting too. And provided them an in-depth discussion of the housing needs, the jobs needs and the fiscal needs as well as a time to review that public comment that we received during meeting one. This resulted in them providing guidance for our community mapping exercise. This was our most attended community meeting. We had somewhere, I believe in the sixties of number attendees. It was a strong this room was was very full. It was a strong show up for a community meeting and that generated a lot of positive data. We also had an online resource for those who could not attend. And that informed RAC meeting number three where the UGB alternatives were created. Those UGB alternatives came directly from what we heard in that community meeting two. We then put out an online survey and an in-person survey. So all you could participate in a variety of ways for community meeting number three, ask people to provide their likes and their dislikes for the UGB alternatives. Our consultant then distilled those down into the most common points that were made and provided that during RAC meeting number four. And that information distilled originally from a community mapping exercise and then from a community survey was the information that was provided to the RAC members prior to them giving their own testimony on the UGB alternatives. Following that, we had our first current work session with this body and with city council. That was the work session in which you heard the RAC over or relook overview from consultant planner Heather Austin. And you also heard the testimony from several RAC members about their experience with the RAC and about what they, how they interpreted the findings from the RAC. We then had another joint work session a few months later, which was another findings review from the RAC and went over some of the regulatory considerations considering our adopted housing needs analysis and the upcoming regulatory change to the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis at the state level. So I'm going to take you back to RAC meeting number four. This is where we got a lot of our most influential information from the staff's point of view and where we were able to distill a lot of that community engagement into a neat and tidy package, so to speak. The conclusion that we've really come out of this RAC meeting with is that all of the RAC members indicated that of the proposed UGB alternatives on the screen, the housing focus alternative was the map that they could see as a starting point. They may not have seen it as the end point but as a starting point for future UGB proposals. The information provided on the housing focus alternative was, can be distilled into three categories. Our summary identified this as providing a variety of housing types, supporting some local jobs in the local economy. It provided a lot of opportunities for new parks, trails, open space and helped close that gap to maintain city services by attracting business investment. And then, of course, meeting that housing need identified in our adopted H and A. What we heard from the community and these community likes here in the center column, this was generated from the RAC and from the community survey. So a balance of jobs and housing was a theme that we heard over and over again. This was probably the thing we heard most. The other strong theme was the providing of new parks opportunities, including land reservoir was identified as a high priority among our RAC members and our broader community members. An opportunity to have more commercial businesses, things like grocery stores, services, ways for people to live in the community without having to leave the community was a recurring dream throughout the public engagement process and with our RAC members. Preserving a small and walkable community feeling was something we heard quite often from both the community and the RAC members. Once again, really preserving that North Plains community feel through a balanced urban growth boundary expansion. A little bit of numbers really quick. The housing focus alternative includes one hundred and twenty-seven acres for housing. That can accommodate seven hundred and ninety dwelling units, forty acres for parks and recreation areas and four hundred and eighty-two acres for commercial and industrial lands. And don't worry, I'm not going to make you envision that in words. This is the map that the RAC was presented with. This is our housing focus map. Once again, all of the members when pointing to a map on the screen identified this map as at least the starting point for a future UGB proposal. RAC members had differing opinions as we would expect on how well this alternative represented that their ideals and their priorities or the community ideals and priorities. And if this was the end-all be-all of how much land should be brought in, some some folks expressed a desire for more, some for less. But they all agreed that this was a starting point. So where does the relook and the RACs down now? The RAC has completed their obligation as described in their charter. Their scope of work is complete. They had therefore scoped meetings and provided us with what we believe believed to be a very strong indication of where the community's priorities lie. At this point, it is the responsibility of planning commission to look at that data, distill that data and provide staff with direction on where the UGB amendment process will go. I'm going to take a break here with the relook process and ask if anyone has any questions specifically regarding the relook. Where I I I've never, I I where is the reservoir on here? The yellow, the spot, the yellow. Okay, thank you. Okay. And that is where the the farm and the train and all of that.
Continue on.
As for UGB expansion and the land use process, UGB expansions are a type of comprehensive plan amendment. The comprehensive plan obviously governs governs our land use in the city of North Plains. And to expand the UGB, we have to have a series of adopted documents, the housing needs analysis, the economic opportunities analysis. And then the comprehensive plan amendments, which include a UGB expansion report and any necessary text amendments. At this time, since the previous comprehensive plan amendment was repealed, when ordinance four ninety was repealed, we are back to the step of developing a new proposal. So we're sort of starting the land use process over back from about thirty or forty percent. We have an adopted EOA and we have an adopted but appeal H and A. So we're at about forty to fifty percent. The development of a preliminary UGB map based on the RAC findings lays with the planning commission. Once that is completed, the next step would be to revise the UGB expansion report to reflect these new community priorities and develop a new comprehensive plan amendment application based on the map that is provided by planning mission. Once that application process is complete, we will distribute notice of public hearing to residents and affected community members and then begin the public hearings process. So all of this will take a series of several months to complete. We want to make sure that this is a robust process and that the amendment we bring forward best reflects the community intentions and priorities. Once public hearings are held, this body will have the opportunity to hold one public hearing or many public hearings. However many you feel are necessary in order to come to a strong conclusion. However, many you feel are necessary in order to come to a strong conclusion on what the amendment should look like and then ultimately make a recommendation to city council. Like to take this time as a convenient moment to correct some of the information that was found in your staff report. Staff have, you'll find the correction in written form in front of you this evening. Staff have had further conversations with DLCD representatives and legal counsel and discovered somewhat of a uniqueness in our online noticing to the state that had resulted in some confusion regarding what actions can be taken at this moment. It was previously believed that because ordinance 489 and 490 are under the same PAPA, the Post Acknowledgement Plan Amendment Noticing System, which is a system established by DLCD to notify the state whenever a city intends to modify or amend its comprehensive plan. That in that system, ordinance 489 and 490 are under the same notice. And so while there is a status on that notice that the it's in adoption appealed status, that status only applies to ordinance 489 on the HNA. And so we cannot perform any revisions to that ordinance at this time. What it doesn't apply to is ordinance 490 and any subsequent 490 is not active right now, but any subsequent comprehensive plan amendment and UGB boundary expansion proposal, we can still move forward with normal noticing and procedures through the state for that action. So any sort of regulatory barriers in terms of state noticing and maintaining good status with DLCD, we believe we have resolved those at this time. I will go ahead and stop here and ask if anyone has any questions about procedurally the UGB adoption process.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes. So since the next step is basically developing a map, are we starting as a base with the map that was presented to the relook committee? Or can we just formulate a new map and go from square one?
Staff would like to see.
With the guidance of housing and everything named.
Yeah. Staff would like to see the planning commission use the RAC findings and the RAC guidance as the basis for your decision-making. Is that a really robust public engagement process that we believe has a lot of weight to it, but ultimately is up to this body to recommend what they believe is in the best interest of the community.
Commissioner House. Commissioner Farah.
No question.
Commissioner Condon.
So if you pick one of these and let's say half of the people in that area that want to sell, so we bring it in there, then grow a boundary, then we kind of shoot ourselves in the foot, aren't we? So do we know that these people that are in these areas, the RAC has picked or actually want to their property they want to sell? Isn't near a growth boundary?
Well, yeah. I mean, if we have an obligation to identify where to move an urban growth boundary to, including land that's been identified, the quantity and type that's needed. And whether or not there is willingness to sell is not one of the criteria. There's a whole process that this is the very beginning of, that eventually will get to infrastructure planning, zoning, all of those things that that then will inform property owners about when and if they're willing to sell. Because we don't, we are nowhere near the process of planning annexations where then they will really feel in a concrete manner how to think about if or when or not. We are so early in the process. It's tough to it it's tough to to try to think about how that should be part of the decision-making processes, is my advice.
Look, so if you can't master plan something and you can't bring a sewer, water, road through a piece of property of somebody that want to sell to you or give you access. So it kind of makes it difficult.
Yeah, well, yes, but at the same time, we have nothing to give people to think about. And that will take a while before we get there, would be my response.
The other side back on this, what if somebody does want to annex? You don't have any master plan in place. Right? So the planning program requires the city to buy within the UGB sufficient build of land for housing for the next 20 years. So that's what we're looking at. And then we have to figure out where the roads, sewer, water lines, and everything else can be got. The city can't imagine even allow some of the annex before all that. Unless they want to pay for it. So I mean, all bills are all that has to get done. The planning program can't dictate the market. You're right. And if they have them slowly, they have a quick move. We don't know. But our job is to do the planning necessarily, make it possible. That's the thing with the planning process. Provides the opportunity for property to develop. It doesn't require anyone to develop it.
If I might follow up, during the previous urban growth boundary process, you know, there was a lot of communication with property owners during that process. And during that time, the number of property owners, at least then, expressing either outright no interest whatsoever or skepticism. Largely, we're largely limited to smaller property owners south of Highway 26. I'm not aware of anybody on the east side except for one property along Jackson School Road or West Union. And at the time, that family, two family, three family members needed to agree on what to do. Two were in favor. One was not. And my understanding is the one who was not has passed away unfortunately. But how that family now feels about it, given that the decision making might be a little bit different, we don't know. But that was one property. And then in the north area that was on the map that the RAC discussed and Rowan discussed, nobody is opposed to UGB inclusion. So it's very limited. So I wouldn't consider it a major obstacle effect.
That's great. Since you're here, do you have any other opinions on or information you can share with us on the process, the appeals, and what our steps are from a legal standpoint?
Yes, Chair. Thank you. The any city, including North Plains, that undertakes a review of its urban growth boundary is required to prepare housing needs analysis. So when people say it's not required, that's just wrong. The housing needs analysis was adopted by the city council and has been appealed to Luba by Thousand Friends. Thousand Friends and the city both agreed to stay that appeal while the city council, planning commission, and the RAC committee undertook your review of where you want to go with that. But there's nothing that prohibits this body from advancing a recommendation to the city council before the city council decides, if they decide to expand an urban growth. Then we will have to finalize that housing needs analysis. I'm fairly confident we can defend it at buildup. And then so I guess the immediate answer to your question is the RAC, the planning commission, and the city council can continue to review its land needs for housing, for parks, for employment, right up to the point of adopting a new decision, at which point we will have to have housing needs analysis placed. But I'm reasonably confident we can get there. But the fact that the housing needs analysis is currently parked at Luba is not a reason to suspend your activities.
Did manager have any additional comments to move?
Um, no, I guess what I would say is I would I would underscore Rowan's answer to the question of what should, you know, should should it be the rack, the map, the rack, the rack worked at or the process versus how much discretionary planning commission has? I would just underscore that that process did have a lot of public outreach and a lot of discussion. And I I'm I appreciate how Rowan summarized that a map was not agreed to by the RAC. A map was pointed to as a concept, and I would agree with the with the characterization. That's the starting point or that what go, what the the information and the concepts that went into that particular map, what was called the housing focus map. Those things should be reflected in what a new map looks like, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that specific map. The RAC did not recommend that map. They recommended what went into it. And perhaps something that looks like it would be the best option. But I want to be clear, the process never you know, gave a Hobson's choice of any kind. This map or that, you have to do this, you have to. It was made clear that we're trying to illustrate concepts so that the planning commission can look and will even forward with something new. So we just don't want to characterize it as there's your options. You have to take one of these. It was more about the concepts going into it and then what they hoped the city would do as far as how to think about planning the meanwhile.
And could you please put up that the housing focus map, please? We had a couple commissioners had a question on in the east. You have the green space there that's got a lot of wetland and it says open space. Is that proposed to be in the UGB or not?
Recology?
No, it's not recol.
No, recall it. Yeah, recall it was just a little detour. I want to double check that. I'm not sure where the. So Rowan's mentioning that it's in.
Yeah, it's hard to view on the projector.
It just we had, I mean, we talked about a long time ago, the employment ground and also talked about residential ground, but we never talked about open space ground. So I'm just surprised that there's an open space.
So Rowan, can I ask about that? I'm sorry. One of the earlier slides said that they pointed out that the HNA recommended 127 acres for housing and then 40 acres for parks and open space. Is that green part of that 40 acres?
No, the the area highlighted in green. And I'm going to give my best summary here for I will probably consult with Steve Voust after the fact to verify. This area is heavily treated and burdened by wetlands. We do not currently, within the city, we have mapped out wildlife habitat and significant natural resources area. When a new urban growth boundary is decided, that significant natural resources area will be reassessed for within the new urban growth boundary. And this area was identified as an area that would be likely so heavily burdened by the significant natural resources designation that it would render it burdensome to to develop. And so it would likely remain as open space. It would be unlikely to develop certainly within the midterm and unlikely within the long term.
So I mean, would that be, how would that be included in a acreage request for needed land? You didn't just add it as extra land?
The significant natural resources land can still be used for recreation. So that is it it's an area where the exact opportunities and constraints aren't known right now. That's part of the existing conditions report of which Steve Vast is the expert on. But it's something that we would be considering throughout the concept planning process.
If I might. To the extent that that area or any other natural areas need to be mapped in inventory to factor into this, Business Oregon has set aside a little over $30,000 to fund an inventory and mapping of that, provided that the lands being mapped in inventory for wetlands, that sensitive areas or adjacent to or potentially affected by or bordered by employment land. We can't use that money to map and study inventory land. We know we'll be doing that. We would be doing as housing. But if it's employment land, Business Oregon does have that fund, that those funds.
Well, yeah, one of the things that obviously after a theme of public hearing, we have a lot of wetland issues. And so it would be good to know what can be developed, what can't be developed, that kind of thing. But also, you know, my concept is a is a regional water quality facility and, you know, near lowlands is probably the best place to put it. And so, you know, I would always want to consider those instead of having someone put a water quality facility on every parcel. So I did, those would be some considerations I would like to see with that.
Those sorts of things, at least conceptually for those purposes, they would be looked at in the PGM grant concept planning process. That's where we get a little more in the level of those details.
Another question that I'd have staff and our legal counsel. When we start to look at an expansion of a UGB and obviously there's people want to come in, people that don't want to come in. And so is there a process where you do letters of intent where they commit and say, yes, I'll develop in 20 years or no, I won't. And then UGB around them. So I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'd hate to bring in anybody that doesn't want to. And then why fight it if they're not going to develop? I mean, that's why we're not bringing in recology is because they have leases that are longer than 20 years. So they won't develop.
The short answer is no, there's no legal requirement that you only bring in people who want to be brought in. That said, I do know that the city has communicated to in some cases, a lot property owners in the UGB area and if you want to ask property or just aware of this to stand.
My my follow-up answer would be my opinion based on working with property owners and hearing from them during the previous process, if we were to go out in different parts of, you know, east side, north, whatever, if we were to go out and work with groups of property owners in different areas here, it won't, it won't, there's no legal requirement to get a commitment, but I think it would be fairly easy to get something a bit more official but less binding. And that would be a memorandum of understanding with recitals about interest in being in the UGB, good faith, participation in planning, so on and so forth. Short of commitment to annex, but agreeing to move forward together for it's a positive goal and thing.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Labonte.
The longer the HNA kind of sits in limbo just waiting, what happens if population projections come out and they're significantly different than what's in our current unadopted or adopted but repealed HNA?
So new population numbers are out with the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis methodology. And it is the bottom line is that.
That's right. We're no longer using Portland states.
Well, with what the with what city council has adopted, the housing needs analysis we have, that reflects the old Portland state forecasting for each urban growth boundary individually that's since replaced by the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis methodology. But you know, if you were to boil down the old forecast and the HNA we have adopted, and you compare it to the new forecast and the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis methodology, the amount of of land that we need between both of them is ultimately about the same. And what it what it really kind of hinges is on the fact that the housing needs analysis that's adopted, the amount of the amount of population forecast is more than under the new stuff we have with Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. There is more population forecast, but from a UGB perspective, when the housing needs analysis was done and then adopted, the amount of land the city had in Rinhill, Rinhill had barely been built out. And so the city actually had a fair amount of land capacity in it for housing. So even though our housing needs analysis that we have has a higher PSH forecast, it also reflects a lot of land we no longer have within the city because Rinhill is almost built out. So if we were to do a new housing needs analysis based on the OHA system, the ONA system, the population forecast is a bit lower, not a ton, but a bit lower. But a buildable lands inventory to go with. But a buildable lands inventory to go with the new new uh population forecast under the O N A system. We have no more land. So it would actually amount to about the same. Land need or unmet land need in the city in both cases, roughly speak. It's not terribly different. Rowan.
The difference between our adopted H and A and the O H and A is, um. Sixty six units, dwelling units. So our H and A calls for seven hundred and ninety dwelling units, the O H and A from this year. Um, calls for seven hundred and twenty four and that O H and A will be updated on an annual basis. If we do not provide more housing. This year or next year or the following year, that number will likely go up. Um.
Is your schedule then?
They they come out every December, so.
Okay, uh, I'm assuming that the next step for the planning commission is to come up with a at least a. Consensus and not necessarily a vote on any particular.
Um, yeah, I mean.
Direction.
Yeah, man, I think what we want to do is work with you all on a process where we we land on, um, you know, a. We we help you land on a decision consensus or vote on a new map. Um, and however you would like to direct staff to bring back more information or elaborate on anything, if you want to extend this to the next meeting. Before you land on a new map, you're welcome to do that. Um, but it, this body is in the driver's seat in terms of drawing map. Um, you know, based on what. What you got from the rack, it was more information about the meeting where the rack discussed all of those. Kind of what each individual said around the table, we can come back with more detail about that. Um, however, you would like to get that input. But it's this, it's this body consensus of road. What you would like to map, the new U G B map to be.
Well, like, yeah, as a lot of people have said and. Mentioned about the rack doing a good job and a big consensus with a lot of people that I see no reason why, at least in my opinion. Uh, the planning commission shouldn't just say this is the uh map that we want to go with. And so I guess it's a consensus, Commissioner Labonte, what's your thoughts?
I'm sorry, I'm taking the map that they presented or.
Just as a starting point.
Like a starting.
Yeah.
Um, as a starting point, yeah, either that or I can generate a map, doesn't matter.
Okay, Commissioner, how?
Bill, can you? Can you remind me why the southern blue pieces there, why we had to bring that in?
Because under Oregon land, under all of this law. Um, there are tiers of of priority. For land being brought into an urban growth boundary and the top tier is called exception land. An exception land is simply land that is semi-urbanized. It's unincorporated, it's outside of an urban growth boundary, but it has some, it has some urbanization to it. And so the land south of Highway twenty six is all exceptional land because there are homes and some employment area. It's all very rural looking. But it's not greenfield, it's not farming. And so we have to start, we have to add that land first. But that's the only exception land we have near North Plains, so it has to be brought in. It doesn't have to be physically brought in first. But it has to be the first consideration and we can't, we have to look at it before we look at other land. Thank you.
So I can, yes, that's what I. I think that, cause I was on the rack committee. I think that map is what the consensus. Um. My big concern is is water rights and. That with that reservoir, to get that hammered in and clear before. But. I think we've got to look at twenty years ahead. I don't care if intel's laying out today. That's not going to change twenty years of forecast, so we have to. Then we have to fill that inventory here as it means we have the availability to do it, so. I think that's a good map.
Commissioner Parr?
I also agree. It's a good starting map with some minor modifications that we can agree on.
Commissioner, cut it down.
Yeah, I agree. I was on the first committee, picked the first one, so I have no problem with that.
Okay, so with that is that the consensus enough for us to at least move forward with that?
Sure.
Thanks, huh?
All right, great, thank you. Thank you. I will move on to new business. Does the planning commission have any new business? Yeah.
None from. Fundamentally.
Okay. Any new business from any of the commissioners? Hearing none. Uh, land use applications and a three J monthly report. Any questions, comments on those?
I have a question. Um, I've never really asked this before, but I've always wondered why does the city review solar panel applications?
Uh, yeah, it's a bit of a nuance with our relationship with Washington County Building Services. So Washington County Building Services, uh, require. Because we require that they verify that land use review has approved. Has been approved by City of North Plains, um. In terms of, say, uh, any facilities that are located above the existing structure. Or outside the existing structure and solar panels are technically above the existing structure. We do a simple review for them to allow Washington County to release the open plans.
I also have a question on the conditional use permit.
Yes.
Why are, yeah, why is this? Okay, so most of the time at planning commission, what's the condition on uses? So why is this? Not being to the planning commission? What, number one, why is it conditional? I'm assuming it's because it's a child care certified center. And number two is why did this going just to staff?
It is coming to the planning commission in September. Um, so this review came in.
Don't have.
No, um, the this is still under review, uh, came in a few weeks ago, uh, the application was deemed incomplete. Um. Uh, a week and a half ago and has since been, uh, the applicant has since to. Come forward with more information, so they will be receiving a completeness letter in their one hundred and twenty day clock will be beginning soon. Uh, the applications for Sylvie's River Charter School, they are a hybrid learning environment. Uh, the use category is an educational facility is conditional use in the C two I would Marshall zone.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? The land use.
Someone, but. Do, actually, I got a call from somebody that had a solar that denied and. I looked at it and I was like. Because of, uh, down on K Bird Street. And I think it's because the solar guys just use Google Earth. And it was, I think, because they were too close to the top real or something, the house.
Yes, this is an ongoing situation, I believe, the house is, um, it's near the end of Avery and or near three eighteenth. Yes, this is a a situation that's ongoing. The dimensions that were submitted to me. Were violating the current setbacks for the R five zone and as a result, the application was denied. Um, they were informed that.
You not drive out to a site visit of the property because the house was building in ninety, so. It it wouldn't have had, it it would have had the correct.
Should, should have had is the operative word there.
It currently doesn't.
So, um, our department does not have the resources available to do surveys. And go out and verify, um, if the applications are correct, um. If an applicant submits an application stating that they don't meet the requirements, um. I'm with the resources available to us required to take them at their word for it, that they don't meet those requirements, um. There were three setback, uh, three requirements that were not met. It was a side setback. A front garage setback and a dimensional standard requiring that the garage not exceed principal. Uh, the front building elevation by more than six feet. All three of those standards were violated and thus the permit was denied. Um, I have received further communication from the applicant. I'm in the process of reviewing that. Uh, it, this is not the end all to all for this applicant. There is a process from. Through which they can, uh, get a non-conforming structure permit. And go forward with any additions or modifications they would like to make. But as of now, with the information available to me, the structure is non-conforming.
So we do, I'm just asking questions. So if you just write down anything you want for your property lines, then you just accept it. That's why I'm asking, so. And and then the question would be, so. I know now the code is that the garage can't extend past the front porch. By so much, but does that mean? So that house can't have solar panels, but the other houses can?
It is.
Trying to figure this out, because I don't.
It's somewhat of a of a weakness in our code that the many land use codes have. A non-conforming use for residential structures is a somewhat, um, more permissive. Our code does not. Uh, our code is very black and white that if the structure is non-conforming, they have to go through the non-conforming. Use or structure permanent process, um. Is is that ideal in this situation where we have a newer structure that should be built to standard? Um, no, and and do I take people at their word for everything that they submit? No, but if someone has submitted something to me that is blatantly not meeting the standard. Um, that is not the planning department's responsibility to try and justify their application for them. Um, if someone were to submit something that allegedly met the standard and upon site visit. Maybe was questionable, we would go through the appropriate channels to verify that information. Um, but in terms of an application being submitted, being verifiably, um, out of standard. I, it's my responsibility to enforce the code in that situation, deny that application.
Right, I did, I did it. I just wonder if maybe we should look at the code possibly. In a future session, because it doesn't seem like that would be non-conforming. Because the house was built to what the code of that period of times.
Your grandfather.
The solar panels are on the house, not in front of the house or anything, so they're not. They're not.
Let me just say that, because I've looked at. At least scores of development codes and every one has provisions for non-performing structures, right? Not a non-performing use of the non-performing structure, still a house or residential self, it's allowed use. But if your setbacks have changed, height limits have changed, a number of other site standards, floor area ratios, whatever have changed. That structure may no longer conform to the current current departments. It sounds like that's what's happening here. And most codes then say that the jurisdiction will not issue permits for a non-performing structure unless the permit will bring a structure further into compliance. Um. That's the general rule. Then there are all the exceptions and it seems to me, you know, solar panels could easily be one that. Despite the fact it's a non-performing structure, we're not going to hold up solar panels because of the good policy. But this notion that that of non-conformant structures isn't absolutely not unique to the North Plains code, it's. Beverly City Code, I haven't looked at. And and a lot of them prohibit permits for a non-performing structure unless it will reinstruct back. And the thing is that these structures were built prior to the code being changed.
Right.
The code made them non-conforming, not the, not the building of them, so. Now, it should be allowances for that.
And then property owner type comes in to get, you know, an ordinary permit, finds out their structure is not performing, they can't get the permit and nobody's happy.
Yeah.
But this, it's not an unusual situation. Bill, our solar ready, so that would actually subject they might sound compliant. Right, so.
That, yeah, updating files is a given in process.
Try to figure out how we make.
Trust me, Commissioner, it's not something I take for, um, it is certainly a an area of our code. As I've mentioned with many areas of our code could benefit from updates.
Okay, so. We reviewed the current land use applications and the three J report, any other comments on those? Okay, we'll move to, uh, the planning commission comments and while we're talking about those, I have a couple more questions. It's my, it's I was asked about changing use. What's the process of change in use and how does someone do? Is that notified two hundred and fifty feet? How does that work?
So, um, a change of use for. Uh, any of our zones is a a simple change of use. Granted, it does not exceed a a list of other, um, changes that may increase the review. Uh, is a type two limited land use. Design review application, um, that is a staff level review. It requires public notice, um, to all members. Um, and it is done in office. It's mostly an objective review, very little, um, subjective criteria. The purpose of the review is to verify that the use and the property, um, and this kind of loops back to non-conforming. It's to verify that the structures on the property are conforming, is to verify that all necessary things like parking and loading areas are provided. Um, if there's a screening requirement, that would be incorporated into the land, limited land use review. Um, so all of those objective type criteria are covered in the type two limited land use design review process. There is not a requirement for something like a neighborhood meeting. There is not a requirement for, um. Uh, public hearing, there is not a requirement to do something like a, uh. Traffic impact study unless, uh, the use, uh. Goes over a certain number of trips, which would be very unlikely for anything that would require a type two review. So it's a pretty limited process. It requires, um, just the public noticing period. It usually takes our department about one month to complete, once the application is deemed to complete. Sometimes it takes applicants a couple of weeks to get to that complete stage.
Public notice two hundred and fifty feet?
I believe that's correct.
That, does that also trigger empty water services? For writer notice, does that also uh trigger clean water services?
They do have to provide us with a clean water services, uh, service provider letter as well as a T V F and our service provider letter.
Hey, um. There was also a question to me about if we're looking at, uh. And this might be for our legal counsel, but if, uh, we, as we look at, uh. Coming up with new codes and stuff like that, um, someone asked, we can. Disallow data center, if we can put it in the code that it can't do it. And also, uh, larger apartment complex, that we can limit those kind of structures.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did. How you go about it, I mean, the devil will be in the details, of course, but the short answer is yes.
Okay. Okay, I mean, we're not stepping on any toes.
No question.
Stomping on them.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, there was a.
Say somebody's.
There was, I mean, some years ago during the anti Walmart era. When a lot of jurisdictions moved to put seismic that's in the code, uh, couldn't have structures over sixty thousand square feet. With the specific purpose of banning big box stores like Walmart, so there are ways to do it, absolutely, okay.
Could I follow up?
Sure.
And specifically regarding. The U G B issue. Um, I would just remind this body, there's a lot of controversy, of course, about data. Um, and we can provide the page for itself from the E O A. Um, but to be clear, in the employment, excuse me, in the economic opportunities analysis. That is the basis for the employment land need for this city and to consider for urban growth boundary expansion. Much pay has been made out of the fact that it calls for data centers. A big data center. Um, that's all misunderstanding or misreading of what's imprint in the economic opportunities analysis. Which identifies the need for some larger industrial sites to be planned and included. U G B, one of the sites is called out. As needing to be, um, one hundred acres. And in the document, it very clearly says uses on that one hundred acre site can. Can include data centers. A data center, rather, or other uses. So just to kind of follow up on that, and we can talk more about that in a future meeting, but. Our planning document, the E O A. Calls for a large site that's appropriate for a number of different industries, including possibly a data center. But nothing in our planning says we are planning for a data center. We are planning for the for the certainty of a data center, the certainty of a large data center, the certainty of multiple data centers. It does not exist, and so there is discretion, like, um, like Chris Green said, for the city to. Be specific within that, avoid it. But a large site that could include a data center is in our plan.
Nobody wants to do this, I.
No, you don't.
I mean, they're committed by multiple pieces of property and. Buying them, that's also true. I mean, it held it, it wasn't one piece of property.
Right, right, uh, wrong or right, exactly.
And thank you, Commissioner Levante, any comment?
Yes.
All right, now my brain, my brain's wrong, um. Uh, no.
Uh, Commissioner Howe, any comment?
I got a question for Rowan, there's a. There's a piece of property that. On North Lennox, and I think it's like three one five. And it's. There's an adjacent lot that they were gonna. Build that comes off Owosco, but they kept referring to Lennox. You remember that?
The street doesn't go through.
Right. The corner.
Okay, so the existing house, they're building a huge. I don't know, addition or. I don't, I don't see the permit, so when I look on the building permit. I'm just, because that was back and forth on that street. Between the two parcels, I just want to make sure. That structure has a permit.
I have been made, oh, I I think I've been made aware of the activity that you're referring to. I will be work rock, uh, reaching out to Washington County to verify they've received permits and if this was an oversight in Washington County's part. Or if this is unpermitted activity.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Commissioner Parr.
No question.
Commissioner, kind of down. I have one last, uh, planning commission comment is, do we have a city planner?
Yeah.
Yeah, city planner. Uh, you're assistant planner, but do we have a city plan?
We, we, we have Rowan as assistant city planner and we will.
Assistant to.
As well, that's just the job title with the job description and job duties as we're required to have legally, but. Um, we will continue to contract, we have contract planning, um, senior contract planning to assist.
Um, do we have that now?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have a plan.
We continue to have three J.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yes, yes.
Just want to make sure, and people said we don't have a plan.
You know, we, we're, we're, we're back, we're. We will continue to rely on contract planning for, um, for kind of more advanced, more. Complex things, um, because Rowan is assistant planner, does a very good job, um, I think. Um, very thorough and communicates very well, of course. But things will come up, we will continue to rely on contract planning for those things.
Thank you, uh, move on to, uh, the counselor comment, so.
I will pass.
Okay. Uh, any staff comments?
Uh, we've covered Sylvie's River Charter School will be coming to you next month. I have also received an application for a pre-application conference for, uh, potential activity at the Space Age Gas Station. Um, they are considering an addition of a additional pump station for, uh, vehicles over there. Um, so we will be working with them to schedule that for the application conference, uh, and move their application forward, backward, wherever they want to to put it. Um. And those are the major land use applications at the time, um. Nothing else, I think, I think we've covered the very exciting, um. Actions of the planning commission, considering the U G B, uh, on the, um. Urban renewal side, Bill and I both attended the National Brownfields Conference, uh, last week in Chicago. Uh, as it relates to our selection for the EPA Brownfields Grant. Um, we were selected for a one million dollar grant for the removal of soils on the local opportunity area site. Well, they're looking forward to partnering with the EPA on that and moving forward to the G O A project.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, is there any other commission business? Hearing none, our next regular meeting will be September the tenth here at six o'clock, unless otherwise. Goodbye, uh, one last question. Mr. Green, did you win or lose the fight?
This sucks. The doctor won, just did a little bit of outpatient surgery.
With that, we'll adjourn at seven thirty-three.